And I guess we need to do roll call to see who's present.
Okay. Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
Ms. Bates?
Present.
Mr. Dane? Mr. Dane, you're on mute. While we're waiting, Ms. Escobedo?
Present.
Myself, Matt Johnson, present. Mr. Dane? Can we get an indication of your presence?
We can see him briefly.
Henry, wave if you can hear us. Can you hear us? There you go. Henry, can you hear us okay?
We heard you just a second ago.
Yeah, I don't think he's hearing us, though.
Hello?
Yep, now we just heard.
Oh, good. Henry, can you hear us?
I can. I had to turn my speakers on a little detail.
Okay, great. All right, we will begin with the consent agenda.
Okay, move to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the town accountant warrants of August 19, 2021, August 26, 2021, and September 2, 2021. Gift acceptance of the Concord Carlisle Community Chest to the Council on Aging totaling approximately $18,000. A gift acceptance from the Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball gift to the Parks and Trees Division of the Concord Public Works Department for $7,700 for the Ripley Field Baseball account. And then minutes to approve. So June 28, 2021, July 12, 2021, July 12, 2021, executive session not to be released, July 19, 2021, and July 26, 2021. One deviation from our agenda as stated is that we will not be approving the August 16, 2021 executive session minutes at this time because we're still awaiting comments from Labor Council. And I should just mention that Labor Council itself is awaiting our draft minutes from the open session of August 16, 2021 in order to be able to properly review the executive session minutes. Then one day special liquor licenses to the Concord Carlisle Youth Hockey for October 8, 2021, and the Concord Museum for September 20, 2021.
Second, anything else?
I think that's enough for this week. We have been off for a few weeks, and I believe that some things piled up. So then I will take Paul Wall, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye, with special thanks to the Concord Carlisle Community Chest and the Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball for their gifts to the town.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay. Thank you, Pro, with Linda. We all do thank you for those generous gifts. And we will now go on to the Town Manager's Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. The town manager, the printed report is in the packet. There was quite a bit to it, so I don't go through it necessarily, but happy to take questions. The big thing is the library also now has expanded hours, including on Saturday, starting this Saturday. They are working towards being open once again on Sunday as well, but some of that is constrained by staffing issues that we are continuing to overcome. The team at the library has done a really good job filling a number of vacancies, and we are thrilled to have them back online except for expanded hours. Just another thing to touch on, first of all, tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. is the ribbon cutting at the townhouse. So if everyone's available to come by and see the new work that Kate will be presenting on here in a few minutes. And Ryan, I see Ryan orders here as well. There are, I know the board received an invitation, there are, the town itself doesn't specifically have a 9/11 memorial, but there are a few taking place in the community that are organized by others. And so this is the 20th anniversary, and so people have the chance to attend and remember. So the only other thing, sorry, the only other thing to talk about is there's an update on broadband in the Town Manager's Report as well. The only other thing that I haven't put in here is discussions about mask wearing in town buildings. The Board of Health has issued a mask-wearing advisory where they strongly encourage even vaccinated people to wear masks in indoor spaces. We are, we will also be notifying people in town buildings of that advisory and encouraging people to follow that advisory. As of now, I don't think the Board of Health has entertained an indoor mask mandate for the community. We are still reviewing it for town buildings because of the vulnerability of population. Harvey Wheeler, the Council on Aging, does require masks indoors for other departments. We feel we're monitoring it every single day. I mean, the information on the severity and the probability of breakthrough infections amongst vaccinated people is evolving, and Concord has a very high vaccination rate as does the rest of the Commonwealth. And so from a risk analysis standpoint, we feel that the advisory right now, people should obviously take the advisory seriously and protect themselves first and foremost. But as of now, we have not implemented the mandate for most buildings.
Thank you, Stephen.
So I just have a brief question. Thank you for your report. Your town report included an update on the PFAS, and I'm just wondering if it now, at this point, includes NAGOG? Because previously it did not.
It does, yeah. I think there's confirmatory sampling to be done yet, but that did include some of the finished water. To be honest with you, NAGOG was ready, but it never came online in terms of providing water. It was ready to go, but the demand just wasn't there because of all the rain we had. And so it has not been contributing to the system, even though it's ready to do so. But I do believe that does include, I do think we need confirmatory sampling, but that does include NAGOG as well. It's all, on the PFAS testing, it's all good news. I can tell you that I've seen other communities with technically with not over the 20, you know, parts per trillion, but still up in the teens, and the fact that we were very low in most of our sources is very good news.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen, for your report. I just had a question on, I know COVID has wreaked havoc with many things, including recruitment, but I was wondering if there was any progress on the recruitment for the library director?
Yes, so we did receive an excellent pool of candidates, and I think there was a first round of interviews. Actually, I take that back. We did receive a recommended shortlist from our consultant, Community Paradigm, and I believe that he is in the process of scheduling interviews. And the first round interview panel will be stakeholders from the Friends of the Library, the Library Committee, and the corporation, the trustees, as well as some town staff. And those should be starting in the near future, but I will tell you that we got an excellent pool of candidates for that opening. So it was really, it was really good to see.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to the library for opening again on Saturdays and considering Sundays. I think that's really important for citizens. Additional questions for the town?
Just, I would just point out that the book sale is Saturday at the library, so.
Yes, that's a big deal.
That's a great segue right into one of the things I was going to announce is Ag Day is Saturday, as we know, and several of us will be at the Select Board booth. We encourage everyone to go to Ag Day and the library for the book sale. If you come to the Select Board booth, say hi, and we might recruit you for a committee. We've got a lot of openings, and that segues into another thing, which is the nickname Green Card. As many of you know, we have what we're going to call now volunteer cards that you can fill out in hard copy or online. And it turns out that the immigration officials use the term "green card" for one of their forms. And we have inadvertently offended and upset at least one citizen, probably several more, by using this term "green card," which is a very scary term for immigrants to be hearing all about that. Concord has nothing to do with ICE or immigration, and we are going to change the nickname "green card" now to "volunteer card." And Jeremy has already graciously been going through all the pages on the website and changing. So we definitely, with a new DEI lens, we want to be welcoming to everyone, and we'll likely be changing that. My next announcement is, as you know, September 20 is our next scheduled meeting. We're having a focused meeting. We strongly encourage everyone from the public to attend. We want to do a brainstorming on the cost of the middle school, how to bring in alternative revenue sources to offset the cost and not have the tax board this project pay for 100% of the project. We want to find some other sources of revenue. So the first part of that meeting will be a brainstorming where, as they say, no idea is a stupid idea. And then we'll try to whittle down what's realistic in the second half of the meeting. The following meeting, September 27, is a regular Select Board meeting. Probably one of the first orders of business will be a joint meeting with the school committee to look at the draft capital plan prepared by the town manager and the school superintendent. And finally, it came to my attention late this afternoon that we may have to call one or more executive sessions, which we might hold next week, which was supposed to be an off week for us. So I just, I'm not sure yet. This just came up this afternoon. Is everybody on the board available on the 13th, the week from today? Is there anybody on the board who's not available should this turn into a real executive session? Everybody okay then, if we have to do that? Okay. All right, we will go on then to our next item.
Terry, Terry, excuse me. Oh, sorry. Can I just comment that if you do need to do that, given you've invited so many different groups to join us, you may want to schedule the executive session after rather than before?
Right, I'm talking about two different dates. So what I'm talking about is the focused meeting is on September 20. And next week, the 13th, we're scheduled to have no meeting. And we may have to call an executive session for next week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Update on hybrid meeting guidelines. I've asked Stephen to give a brief update on this.
Yes, taking notes. So one of the things, as you know, we put out meeting guidelines, as Matt referred to it, the old days of May 2020 about meeting on Zoom. And we had kind of let them ride for a little bit. We had talked about developing hybrid meetings. We started to make changes to our meeting guidance from back in May, but we hadn't finalized anything. And to be honest, even, you know, even here tonight, being on Zoom was a result of some level of uncertainty about the guidance we've been receiving in terms of, you know, being indoors, either conducting a meeting while wearing a mask, which would be challenging, I think, from a communication standpoint. You know, or being in a room at least six feet apart, which would present some significant logistical challenges for the telecast for MMN Media Network. And so we read, while things are, you know, while we're still trying to figure all that out, maybe the Zoom meeting tonight was the, you know, the discretion being the better part of valor here. So we took a look at our guidance and wanted to make sure that we had updated hybrid guidance. It didn't circulate. Terry had asked for kind of a what changed thing, so we circulated two documents. One is what's different from the last official guidance, which was May 7, 2020. And then there was one that we started in July that we were reviewing internally. And then a track changes from that one as well, so you can see kind of the evolution of this. So I won't go through great detail, other than it separates Zoom meetings from hybrid meetings or in-person meetings. You know, we do have, our hybrid capacity is growing. We do have Kai's Road still available, or available as well as CNLP. I believe, I know MMN was working on the Select Board meeting room and the hearing room. I think those are either completely ready or very near ready to have hybrid meetings. And then for in-person meetings, you can see the room list there in the guidance if you're the contact. So then the only other thing that really we wanted to at least reference, to be honest with you, I got a little stuck on how to talk about whether or not people should wear masks or socially distant. And like I said, the guidance has been, the guidance has been moving around quite a bit. It reminds me a little bit of the beginning of the pandemic, except for the public health conditions are completely different. We know more, but not enough apparently. So in the end, in this draft, we really put it on the meeting attendees and participants to review the current guidance from the town of Concord. And whether that, and I said "town of Concord" generically because that could include the Board of Health. That also could include the town website for guidance from, whether it's related to town facilities or community guidance from the Board of Health. But people really need to take responsibility for knowing what the guidance is when they're holding their meetings and comply with that. And so that was always something we added to make sure people did their homework. I think if I was going to editorialize a little bit on it, I think boards and committees that meet and are not recorded or televised by MMN Media Network, which is mostly the non-executive, non-regulatory boards and committees, I think in-person meetings based on even the most recent advisory from the Board of Health, I think those can continue more easily in person. We do have rooms where people can spread themselves out six feet apart, and so if people want to continue to have those kinds of meetings in person, I do think wearing a mask during a meeting is still a best practice, but you can, we have places where people can socially distance. The challenge, like I said, the challenges with logistics associated with having either people be socially distant and broadcasting that, or having them be, even using a microphone with a mask on, can create some potential challenges. We've seen some things that went well with masks on and others that were a little harder here, and so there's no guarantees there. You know, I think some boards and committees are probably going to go back to Zoom exclusively, until we have, you know, better information on, you know, what really is the threat of the Delta variant and breakout infections or booster shots or some other change in the place we're in now. And so I guess the biggest thing is, you know, make sure you talk to us if you want to have a hybrid meeting, especially Chris and Jeremy in our office can certainly be a first contact if you want to have a hybrid meeting. We can see, we can try and figure out logistics from there, but it's, I expect, we have it. I have it marked draft because I expected the change, you know, based on public health information as we go.
Thank you, Stephen. I'm sure we'll be getting more updates in the next few weeks. And please let us know as soon as the townhouse is ready for hybrid meetings. I guess it's almost ready, so. I would like at this point to ask the board what you would like to do for the next meeting, which, assuming it's September 20, the focused meeting, we've invited many people, and they can attend by Zoom or in person if we meet in person. Does the board want to have that brainstorming on Zoom or in person? I think we should try and make a tentative decision now. Things could change again. But Matt and I will be talking in the next few days about how we're going to run the logistics of the brainstorming. And I'm also going to be working with Carrie, so she can do some modeling. So we have to do a little bit of planning, and it would be helpful if we have an idea that it's going to be live or it's going to be Zoom. So what's the board's pleasure on this?
I would think with the number of people that potentially could be joining us, that it's, you know, probably wise to do it on Zoom, even though I know that's not ideal for everyone, but.
One vote for Zoom.
I would vote for a meeting in person at every possible opportunity. If we either make masks, either optional or mandatory, I think that should give necessary protection because keep in mind that the current precautions are really, what can I say, an excess of caution. And that if there's a problem with people speaking with masks on, I think that if people are masked only when not speaking, that still substantially reduces the risk, and it makes it possible for people to speak clearly by just taking their mask off or just lowering their mask for a few minutes while they're speaking, and then they can put it back on, and I think everybody would feel quite secure. Also, for that large meeting, the one on the 20th, if we could hold that in the hearing room, I don't expect that we're going to have 50 or 100 people there. There's plenty of room in that, in that hearing room for people to spread out. So, and I think that meetings with people in person are just so preferable to the electronic meetings, especially when you want to encourage people to speak up. And because being online, being the Zoom meeting tends to be more formalized, more controlled, and more inhibiting for people to speak. And it's also more difficult for people to communicate with their neighbors sitting next door about whether they should stand up and say something, for instance. So I think that, I think we should do everything we can to have these meetings in public consistent with the at least reasonable safety standards.
Okay, some good suggestions there. Susan and Matt?
I agree about the importance of in-person meetings, but since this invitation is so widespread, I think there is going to be a good turnout. And I'm wondering, would it be a hybrid meeting? If we said in person, would it be only in person or would it be?
No, no, it would definitely be hybrid because I think that someone might want to contribute and not feel comfortable showing up, and we would definitely want them to be able to contribute by Zoom. If, we don't want to discourage anyone from participating. So one of my questions would be whether that hearing room would be able to have a hybrid meeting by the 20th or not, and whether the sound quality would be good or not.
Yeah, if I may, Terry. They were testing it. That room still has a bit of an echo, but the PA sound is very good with the speakers. They were testing it out. We are still working on our hearing assists. That project has been, that has been impacted by COVID and availability of equipment and staff for our vendor, and Kate can talk about that if you want in more detail. But an option could be in person for participants and, you know, hybrid and Zoom for attendees. I know, you know, I don't want to prevent people from having the opportunity to come to the meeting and attend and see in person, but, you know, depending on how many people we think we're going to, how many participants we're going to have, that may be something that we could, we could think about.
Right, I kind of agree. I think we don't have that many participants. And by participants, I mean anybody who wants to contribute to the brainstorming. I don't think we're going to have more than 20, which is still a lot in a small room. So we do want to spread out. But I think there could be maybe 30 or 40 more people watching on Zoom if we're lucky. You never know. I hope we have good attendance, and we should plan that we're going to have good attendance because this is a very important project, and we want to make it affordable. And, you know, we really can't put off this meeting anymore. We've kind of waited as long as we can, and I don't think we should put it off because we don't know if the Delta variant might get worse with the cold weather, you know. So we have to have the meeting on that day and do the best we can. So Matt, what do you think?
I'm completely comfortable with the Zoom approach, but I'm willing to go along with the board's, you know, opinion. I do think, you know, here we are tonight, meeting over Zoom, and it just seems kind of consistent. If we are already meeting over Zoom for our own board meeting and we're having a larger event, it does seem strange to switch it back. So until there's a fundamental change in the, in the public health circumstances. So, but I can go along with the board. You know, count me out as far as my vote.
Okay, so we're kind of all over the place. We have, I guess, several of us that would go either way. One person really wants live, one person really wants Zoom. I will look into it some more, working with Stephen and the Town Manager's Office because I like Henry's suggestion, but if that room not accommodate a hybrid meeting yet, or if the sound is too echoey, then we're going to defeat the whole purpose, and it would probably be better to have it on Zoom. So that's going to be one of the big factors.
Yeah, at least in the past, the hearing room was a misnomer. It was a hard.
Yeah, so that would be a real shame if that happened. And we haven't had an ability to test out that new carpet and see whether it's going to absorb the sound or not, so.
Very hopeful.
Yeah, okay. If anyone has a strong opinion in the next few days about it on the board, send me an email or call me, and we'll see what we can come up with.
If people want to hear the sound in there, you know, just send me a note, let me know, and we can try and have somebody there to turn it on and so you can hear it. Maybe Terry, that's a good idea for you to do.
What about tomorrow? When we're on the building?
Yeah, okay, if someone from MMN could be hanging around to fire that up, it'd be good.
Okay, that would be really great. Okay, any other questions about the hybrid meeting? So I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that as things evolve. Okay, so let's move on to townhouse reopening, office hours and staff locations.
So I didn't, I didn't want, we have the hours. These, the sheet, the chart that was in the packet is now taped to the front door. And so these are the hours at townhouse. You'll note that the assessor's office is now on Court Lane. It's always been on Court Lane, but they'll reopen on, they're reopening on Tuesday as well, so. So any questions about the hours?
Well, Stephen, can you explain, there's two sets of hours. One set is posted as for the public, as I understand it, because but that's not the hours that staff works. They work under hours than that, correct?
They do. Yeah, the, the, I think it's eight to five. We have staff. Actually, it's, it's beyond that, quite honestly, because what, as I think I mentioned before, by giving employees some flexibility with their schedule, we have employees in as early as seven and as late as whenever they decide they want to go home. So there's a lot of work happening outside of these hours.
Okay.
And, and I should add that if people need to do a transaction outside of these hours, they can certainly contact town staff and make an appointment, do something over online like this or using Microsoft Teams. The drop boxes remain available. And so there's really, there's still many ways to do business with the town outside the in-person hours, but certainly people are available by appointment as well.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board? Henry?
Terry, I had a number of comments that I sent, I think I sent to you and I, I would like to discuss. The first is that I think that the full hour should be resumed across the board as quickly as possible, that it is important, again, within the confines of safe contact to, at least for starters, to get back to the normal working schedules for town staff. It's not just a personnel or a management issue. It's a communication issue. It's a relationship between the residents of the town and the town employees, where there's a big difference between going into an office and standing and talking to somebody face to face than having somebody be a faceless entity, entity like somebody you call your bank, who you would never really get to see or get to know the person. It's, it's, it's a matter of human contact, which has been very important in this town. And so that, so I think we ought to get back to the normal hours as quickly as possible. At number two, I think that for starters, those hours should be the same as they were prior to COVID. There's no reason to change. If, if administrative, if administrative necessity dictates that we do things differently, let's try it the old way first, the things that people are used to and worked for this town so well for a very long time. The, the, the third thing is that I think it's terribly important, especially for the town manager's office, to be open five days a week for the full schedule. There are so many things that happen that we need to deal with, especially for the board, to be able to walk into the town manager's office and have somebody you can talk to. And I think in particular, when the board meets on Mondays, to have the town manager's office closed on Fridays is a very poor and inconvenient idea, especially since we, for some reason, are totally unable to get the package out to the board before five or six o'clock in the evening on Fridays. And so somebody needs to be available. And I remember when I was doing permitting work with the, with, with the board, you'd, you'd go in and talk to somebody in order to deal with something that was coming up on Monday at the board meeting. If you're going to have a day that the town manager's office is closed, I can't think of a worse day than Friday. And so, and I think, you know, we have a full-time town manager. The hour should be nine to five, five days a week. It's a full-time job. And, you know, there is very little work you can do better outside of the office than you can do inside the office and being available to staff, to boards and committees and to students, citizens who want to come in and talk to somebody about something. It's really important for us to reestablish the personal relationships between the residents of the town and the town employees and not have them be isolated from each other. And we have a lot of recovering to do after the COVID period, which has kind of just interrupted those relationships. And actually, we ought to be trying harder to renew those, those relationships rather than kind of maintain the isolation that we've been living in for the last two years.
Okay, thank you, Henry. I'll let Stephen respond, but let me just clarify again. I, some of it has to do with the terminology. And Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't consider that the town manager's office is closed on Fridays. It's, it's the, because I know Jeremy is working. I, I think all of you are working, particularly on the agenda packet. However, I think your door might be closed physically to walk-in citizens that would prefer come Monday through Thursday, nine to three. So if, if you could clarify that again, because some of this, Henry's written some interesting points that I think might just have to do with the wording of it.
Yeah, I think, and Henry was on the board when we presented the presentation about how we got to the new schedules. And so I did, I did send it to the board, I think, once again. But really, the, the scheduling was really developed through a lot of feedback from employees. And so it's something that they, that they really felt would be beneficial, both from a work-life balance standpoint, but also from a work processing standpoint. I think without a doubt, when you don't have, when you have time that's set aside where you won't necessarily be interrupted by a walk-in, you do have some more dedicated time for team building, professional development, project-based work. You have that opportunity that doesn't exist if for every minute we're there, people can come in. And so it was really, a lot of thought went into developing that new schedule. And, and, you know, Terry's right, we, we were, in fact, being closed to the public gives us more headspace to focus on the packet and the materials and the things that are really important on. Friday is an extremely important day in our office, Henry. You're absolutely right. And we get, we get to focus on, on that work. And, and, you know, and the other thing is, is it's not just about, it's, it's about, it's not just about service. I mean, if we look at the number of transactions, when we were not available for public walk-ins, we did more transactions than we did the year before. And, and we, we didn't want to forget that, that lesson learned, that we can effectively serve the community in, in non-traditional ways. And that's part of where the organization, I think, really wants to go is, is, is is a part of a talent recruitment and retention strategy. And you don't have to take my word for it. I mean, all employers are struggling with talent attraction and retention. And it's the places that are supportive of work-life balance and promote employee flexibility that are the ones that are becoming the desirable places to work. And that's really, I think, the goal for the Town of Concord is to be the employer of choice amongst municipalities. And so it's, I, I completely agree with you, Henry, on the idea about rebuilding human connections. I still think that our public in-person hours are more than ample to maintain that. And I, but I think what we're, what we're doing here is really a reflection of how work itself has evolved and what we learned about work during the pandemic. So I, I very much appreciate the feedback. We've got a lot of positive feedback from employees with, with this new approach. And so I, to, to your point, I felt like if we, if we started open the old way, we would never get this opportunity to try this out. And so that's why we, we wanted to try it out in a new, flexible way at the very beginning. And then last thing I'll say is, if you're telling me I only have to work nine to five, that is great news.
Let me respond to part of that. Part of that is to say, it depends what you think that the job is. If the job is processing transactions, that is one concept of how the town operates. If you see the job as dealing with the people who live in this town, that's another way to look at it. And the way I, the way I see the, the people that I deal with, for instance, the bank I happen to walk into, you talk to people who are glad to see you. There are other banks in town where you walk in and you're ruining their day. And so the important thing is not pushing the papers and moving the transactions. It is, in fact, dealing with the people who live in this town, which I think is a more important job than processing dog licenses. Not the same thing with dogs or licenses, but I mean, it's not the number of transactions. It's the, it's the relationships.
Okay. Other questions, comments from other board members? Susan?
I think, I think both Stephen and Henry are making very good points. I think the schedule that's been presented offers the opportunity for citizens to come in without appointment, just as needed between those stated hours, usually nine to three. But I think that things have changed, COVID has changed the way people transact business. And I, I don't think it's a hardship to say you can come in six hours a day in a period of time rather than eight. And I think the relationship building is, is going to happen in that timeframe. In addition, citizens can schedule something outside of that. If that timeframe doesn't work, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing what you're both saying about Fridays. And I, I, I agree that it'd be good to be able to walk in, but having, you know, if you don't have any dedicated time for specific tasks and Friday being the case in the town manager's office to get ready for the Monday meeting, then you're not going to be as efficient in pulling that material together for the Monday meeting. I know, I'm not sure where I stand on the open thing on Friday, but I do think that this is not the end of human relationships, if the hours are nine to three versus nine to five. And if your, your example of the bank is a perfect one, because they're normally not nine to, you know, they're, the banker's hours is banker's hours for a reason. It's, it's not when it's necessarily convenient for, for customers. So anyway, that, those are my comments.
Okay. Other questions? Linda or Matt? Okay.
I, I would just say that I, I remember when this was presented and we talked about, you know, giving it a period of time for implementation and getting some feedback down the road. And the town manager agreed to that.
Thank you, Linda. I was just thinking about that and I forgot that we agreed to that. I think that's a really good idea. If we take a look in three months, six months, somewhere in that timeframe and see, let's hear from customers as well as employees how it's working. Okay, so we are now going to move on to the townhouse renovation project. And Kate is here to talk with us about that.
Hi, evening, everyone. Hi, how are you?
Hi, Kate.
I'm also joined by Ryan Orr, who's our facilities director. So I'll just start. Good evening. My name is Kate Hodges. I serve as the deputy town manager. Memo was included in your packet, which was written to the town manager from me on August 24th, which detailed the project, which dates back to its inception in 2016. And most recently, the bulk of the work commenced in November of 2020 and the majority of the work was completed just a couple of weeks ago. So after a successful bidding process, Classic Construction and Development Incorporated of Littleton, Mass was the low bidder. They had a total cost of a bid price of $686,000. There were a total of four change orders, which I went into greater detail in my August memo. The total of the change orders was $105,563, which gave a project completion cost of $790,000. Ryan Orr, our facilities director, served as our project manager for this endeavor and I am going to hand it over to him to take you through some of the project highlights and the challenges. And I'm hoping I can share my screen because we have a bit of a slideshow as Brian goes through it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ryan Orr, facilities director. As Kate mentioned, I served as the owner, owner's project manager for this renovation. Also, as she mentioned, the, the project goals were to create a secure and functional area for the finance team and to have both public and private workspaces. Many of the private office suites lacked storage or areas for copying and reception. There was little to no privacy for in-person transactions or telephone calls. Functionality was essentially nonexistent. The, the staff areas were, 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 were few and filled with older and less efficient and sustainable utilities as, as those shown here and throughout the first, first floor. First step in the project, once all the contracts were executed and included a full demo of the partition walls. We're not quite there yet, but coming up. I'm not sure where to, almost. There it is. All right. So, so included a full demo of, of, of the partition walls. This led to the discovery of several unknown existing conditions, including support columns hidden in the walls, floor height elevation issues, which hindered ADA compliance, tiling containing asbestos, miscellaneous wiring and other electrical issues. As you can see here, a support column was found in the existing wall, which required some design, redesign of the, of the, of the space to work around it. And then this, this here, it's, it's, it's a good example or depiction of the large amount of wiring that had to be traced back to the, to their original origins and either reconnected to a new panel or just taken or just removed. These, this here is where the, 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 well, all right, further back, the, the last slide there was the, the, where the new bathrooms in the front lobby are. We're not, we're not there anymore, but so, I don't know, I'm kind of, kind of lost where we were, but.
This is the paper shuck.
Yeah, so, so the, the contractor here, they installed a paperless gypsum board. Taking into consideration some of the issues that we had with molds and mildews and the odors that we had in the townhouse that had existed for, for a long time. So there's something they took into consideration for that. Here you can see, this is the public service area. They've installed plywood, three-quarter inch plywood, which is applied under the gypsum board to support the moldings that were, which were used in that area. It also added security to the offices from the public space. And then from there, we were looking at those ceiling tiles there. Yep. The new ceiling tiles in the public service area are made of 100% recycled aluminum. The floor is, the floor as well, which you can see in the picture on your left side, is marmolium, which is. is marmoleum, which is um, it's, it's a, losing my spot here, I'm looking at the pictures. The, the, the floor is, is fully sustainable and has, has many health features which Kate had, I, she touched base on in uh, her memo on page four. The final phase, the security features of the new counter, counter windows, the counter and windows allows staff to have clear space to help customers without disrupting other work, others working uh, that happen to be on the telephone at the same time or having conversations in their offices. This here is the uh, back room, which still contains the vault, but is now limited to only staff, ensuring internal mail, sensitive files and other paperwork are kept out of the public area. Um, and then we're moving on to signage. Uh, the clear signage on the windows and doors, windows, doors and walls, will assist the public in identifying where they may, where they may need to go in order to conduct their business. Uh, and lastly, uh, so, these are the, this is the new, new bathroom in the, in the, in the backside of the building. But lastly, we have the new, uh, newly created conference room and training area, which was added uh, to the back portion of the first floor. This area may be used for special projects such as uh, absentee ballot counting or for meetings, both in evenings and during the day. Uh, this area may be accessed in two ways. One from the hearing room, back staircase. And then the other, the other way to access this would be through the first floor, the new area entirely. You'd have to walk front to back to get to it. It's in the back right corner, so. Uh, hopefully walked you through it pretty good.
So that was just kind of a, a brief overview. We were trying to do things at a bit of a high level um, and didn't know if there were any questions of the board. The technical questions are probably best answered by Ryan, but we could certainly do our best to, to tag team in if we need to.
And, and um, thank you, Kate, for your um, summary um, where, taking us through the whole project and in the packet. If anyone's interested in seeing the history, um, I didn't realize what the initial phases of the project were. It was very helpful to go back to there and then learn all, all the different change orders and all the headaches you went through. So thank you both and the whole team. Uh, and questions from the board? Uh, is that your hand that you have up?
That is, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I was intrigued by what appeared to be in a couple of the different rooms to be trapdoors in the floor. Uh, so what, what's that about?
That's if you don't pay your taxes on time.
Okay.
Yeah, we just open it.
Yeah. No, those, um, there was, at one point on the townhouse, there was an addition built on the back, on the, on the backside where the new conference room is located by the vault, just behind the vault. And that's just a crawl space, so it's just an access point for us to get to the plumbing, for the drainage, for the bathrooms and the sinks. But that's what that is. Okay.
If you were to go down.
Tomorrow, the whole, the whole setup, okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I'm happy.
I hate Zoom for that reason. Um, if you were to go down in the basement, what you'll notice is, is essentially that the basement wall ends and if you were to, you know, look up, um, you'd realize that the building continues to go on. So it's a, it's an interesting concept, because I think previous iterations where we'll just put an addition here, we'll put a staircase here and it's, it was very interesting. One of the things, and we left it out of the memo, um, when Ryan and I first started the project is, you know, the consultants come in and the architects and they give you every variation of the project depending on budget. And so the project that they gave us, if money were no object, which it invariably always is, is that you would gut the entire building and then recreate the floors. So the idea would be to put metal inside the whole building to shore it up, so it's able to have the load and then redo the floors. And so they, they ran um, a drone through some of the, uh, some of the areas to show us what that would look like. And you then got to be able to see what walls went up where. And um, and it's almost as if it were three separate buildings completely. So it's, it's a very interesting building. It was a very challenging but worthwhile project, so. Um, we've given all of that over to the town archivist, so I'm, I'm sure people will be able to see it and read about it for years to come.
Um, there was a picture uh, when they did the interior demolition and before you wouldn't have noted, really known it, but you could see the punch shot, the punch through in the back wall to the doorway into what was in the kit, what is, I guess, still the kitchen. Um, so you can really see, um, yeah, um, where they put that addition. And how thick the exterior walls are, just as, as an aside. Um, that was a really compelling um, image and moment, seeing that back there. You know, but.
Yeah, if you go back, Kate, you were right there.
I believe that this has a mind of its own, although it's likely operator error, but I feel better saying. I'm telling you, it just.
But Matt, if you'd like to see that tomorrow, I'd be happy to open one of those hatchets.
No, no problem.
There it is.
I'll volunteer to um, be the, be the person who goes through the trapdoor. I want to see what.
Oh, perfect. I'll, I'll give you a flashlight.
So again, this is the end of the original townhouse. Um, and if you were to go down into the basement, you know, it, it basically, the vault is here, obviously, and, and it goes a little bit underneath this. But then this whole area is, was an addition at some time. But it was interesting to see the brickwork. It's really amazing craftsmanship.
What is there now?
So right now, if you were to walk in, um, there's these little lines in the floor here that make up the public service area. And then um, the town clerk's office suite effectively ends right around this area. Uh, and so there's a wall, there's a, excuse me, a door here. And it comes back, the vault is there, there's some storage with um, cabinets. This is the internal mail system that's here, the mail machine, um, a copier. You walk back in here, there's some more filing, um, some internal uh, confidential documents that would be back here. There's a ladies staff restroom on the other side of this wall and a very small kitchenette and mother's room here um, for folks who need to either refrigerate or heat up their lunch or both, um, or any nursing mothers that, that may need it. And then the hallway extended this way, um, which is why when Ryan was talking, he was saying you could access this new conference or training area. You can either come down, this leads up to the hearing room. So you come down these steps and can access it. There's a door that's installed right here that is its own lock. So if you, if we open this up for members of the public, you would need a card access key to get into this staff-only area. And that's been helpful for the security reasons, but the, the conference room then would be back there.
Okay, other questions from the board?
So there was.
Oh, Linda?
Yeah, I, I think um, the town manager already mentioned that there's some delay on the hearing assistance. Is there any update on that that you can give us, Kate?
Sure, so the um, the hearing room is equipped with um, assisted listening devices and they do work and they're functional. My understanding, and I, I could be wrong, is that the issue with hearing properly in the hearing room isn't just for those who have identified as having hearing troubles or, or being hard of hearing. And so while we've solved the problem for folks, uh, or we've somewhat solved the problem for folks who are hard of hearing or use um, the services of either assisted listening on their own self-hearing aids, it's the echo that's there. And so pre-COVID, um, Ryan and his team had taken a look at installing uh, different types of paneling systems in and on along the ceiling or along the wall. And they're not particularly aesthetically pleasing. And so there was some discussion internally whether that would detract from the beauty of the room or its historical uh, you know, significance. And I don't believe we've ever really flushed that out, um, and we probably need to. Uh, the other thing is we have um, upgraded the sound system that's in there. And so there are a few caveats with that. Uh, we upgraded the sound system and then we had, I think approximately three public hearings. And then um, we obviously had to recess to Zoom. Um, and what was happening is that people um, were either speaking too closely to the microphone or not closely enough. Um, and so it was amplifying differently. And so what we've, have kind of alluded from that is that we really do need to have somebody with the audio technical capability, similar to what we do at town meeting, that's able to adjust the microphone, because the way that I speak is different than the way that Ryan may speak. And, and so if we just have it as a one-size-fits-all, that, that hasn't been working. And so I think it's a series of trial and error. Less so when we're broadcasting and more so if you're participating in the room and you are not, and you're sitting to the back of the individual who's speaking. So we're able to hear the select board better when you're sitting in the audience looking at the select board. If I were to get up to the microphone that historically has been in the center of the room and speak to the select board, the persons that are sitting behind me will have a much harder time hearing me. And so we're, we're working with um, our audio contractor to try to figure out what is it that we can do, you know, relative to that. I don't know, Stephen, if you had more just to add to the, the challenges. It's, it's, it's a multi-step issue.
Yeah, and I think that the challenges, like I said, have been exacerbated by the pandemic. I did hear someone was mentioning they have kind of a echo attenuation systems as well. Um, not, not just the sound dampening like fabric, but also special microphones and speakers that can do that. So I think we're, you know, we, as Matt noted, the irony of the, of the name of the room is something that I've heard about as well. We wanted really, our goal is to have it be a, a really great um, you know, public meeting experience. And um, I think we have made some improvements, but there is a little more work to do. But like I said, the P A sounds, if you're in there, the, the microphones are sounding really good and the people listening at home can hear it very, very clearly.
Right, so um, I'll, I'll be, you know, um, take a look tomorrow and um, see if it's up to snuff for holding a quality brainstorming meeting in a couple of weeks. If not, then we'll do it by Zoom, I think. Because um, Harvey Wheeler um, isn't ready for a hybrid either. So I don't think we have another room that's large enough. And it's really a shame. We have a really nice room there. So I hope eventually um, or even by two weeks from now, we can, we can get it working. It would be great. Additional comments from the board, anybody? All right, seeing none, um, thank you, Kate and Ryan and the whole team. We'll be happy to see you tomorrow and um, yeah. Calls for celebration, moving back into the townhouse. Great, very good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on now to the draft charge for the personnel board study task force. And Susan's been heading up this effort, so I'm going to um, have Susan take it away.
Thank you. Thanks, Terry. Um, I just wanted to briefly go over the process up to this point and then um, get into the documents that are provided in the packet. The, the uh, goal was to create a, a draft and distribute it to the select board, human resources director, town manager, personnel board chair, and to the head of the citizen committee, Ned Perry, for comment. And feedback was requested by last Tuesday, um, 8:31. Um, I received feedback from Bill Maraczek, who was the current chair of personnel board, who was concerned about that the committee would truly be an independent committee and not include current select board or current personnel board members. And Amy expressed some concern about the, the group getting, if you look at, one of the sections has a whole lot of, of specific actions. And she was a little concerned about that if people kind of got waylaid and went down one or two of those into great depth, that would, that this is supposed to be, that she felt, a higher level. And I agree, for your view. Um, I didn't hear anything from um, any of the other people that the document was sent to, but I did receive uh, two documents from Henry. One that I'm going to focus on and go through, because I think this captures it all, is the, the uh, red line document that uh, Henry submitted on 8:31. And in your packet, it is page, it starts on page 52, but it, it, you know, it, I don't know if you could see that. It's the one, well, it's the red line personnel draft. So I thought we could just go through each of these areas where Henry has suggested edits. I can um, and see what the board, how the board feels about it. The first one is the purpose and I, I believe that his wording is better than mine, so I don't have a problem with the first paragraph. The second one about making recommendations to prepare articles for 2022 annual meeting. I'm not sure if that deadline is meetable, but I would, we can keep it in and perhaps have to change it later on or just leave that paragraph out. I think I would ask for comments as we go.
Let's, let's stop there. Let's do one section at a time. So, so section A.
Mm-hmm, purpose.
Right, do we have um, any comments?
And that's both of those paragraphs, what I just discussed was.
Right, right. So Henry has marked it up and Susan is basically agreeing. Linda or Matt, do you have anything?
Yeah, um, first of all, I do agree with Henry's changes to the first paragraph, though I would go slightly further and eliminate the word "there too" at the end. I don't think it adds anything. Uh, then uh, on the second paragraph, I do believe that because it's a task force, that we really should provide some, you know, timeline for completion as opposed to leaving it open-ended, because that, that's just the nature of a task force versus a committee. So, you know, while I, I don't have a strong opinion about whether uh, you know, what, what the time should be. Oh, and, and that, actually, that date's not there. It's, it's further down, excuse me. Anyway, so in section A, eliminate "there too" is my suggestion.
I'm good with that.
Okay, I got that.
Good, let's move, move on to section B then.
So section A, section A.
Oh, Linda, you have more?
You know, I do agree, um, that second part of section A talks about to prepare articles for the 2020 annual town meeting. If in fact, we think that's realistic, uh, you know, we would need to see that material, I would guess, sometime in January at the latest, and maybe even before in December. So typically, you know, we, you know, if, if we are working with a specific town meeting deadline, you know, we, we back it up to the actual time that we needed as the select board.
That's a very good point. The select board would have to take the position, plus we need public hearings. If we're going to be having articles, it has to go in a warrant, et cetera, et cetera. So that does really back it up to January.
At the latest, because January 8th is when the open, um, the warrant opens and we have a preview meeting. and we have a preview meeting.
And if you have it open there, Linda, what is the date when the warrant articles are due? If you have it.
Um, I don't have that. Well, it's, it's usually, it's usually a week or two before, yeah.
No, I think it's short, a little shorter this year.
Later the warrant opens and.
Right, it's probably about February first. Um, the end of January, February first. So the question is whether this task force might be able to make any recommendations and be far enough along to really have some draft articles prepared by the end of January.
I think that's ambitious, but as I said, I think we could, you know, take a pulse maybe in, in November with the, the group and see where they are and then eliminate that wording or change it to the following town meeting.
With our meeting schedule, we won't have a member seated at minimum until the beginning of October.
Yes.
So I, I don't think it's realistic. It's just, I'm just going to say it.
Okay.
So should we eliminate the paragraph or?
Well, why don't we just eliminate the date? Prepare articles for annual town meeting or?
Okay, just with no twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Okay.
If they can do it, wonderful, but.
Okay. All right, Section B.
Section B, Henry, Henry had some very helpful edits. The, down to this, the last four lines, which are additions. It says, however, the current role of Personnel Board is outdated and doesn't reflect needs of twenty-first century workforce or challenges faced by the town in recruiting, developing, and retaining high-quality employees. And that, that's true. However, the charge is not to, it's to review the documents. It's not to recommend what the Personnel Board should do. It's to see, it's to line up the documents with the existing duties of the H R Director, Town Manager, Citizens.
But we would not be having a task force unless we felt that this was the case. I mean, if we look at a paragraph called background and all we do is say, hey, there's a, there's a Personnel Bylaw, which is effectively what the thing says otherwise. I, we're not really motivating why we're having a task force.
Okay, all right, so.
I like, I like that part. I think it's very important background. I, I would like to keep it in there.
So, so we might say does not necessarily reflect the needs of the town so that it's less, less leading?
Except for that, I, I do believe that the Personnel Board itself has expressed that opinion.
Yeah. The other thing I would say about Section, Section B is that I believe that the charter was adopted in nineteen fifty-six and the approval process came later because of some specials Massachusetts statute. I happened to look that up today, so it was adopted.
We just say the town.
It was adopted in nineteen fifty-six.
Uh, how about just the town charter of nineteen fifty-five, right? I mean, because it was written, wasn't it?
How about just saying as defined in the?
Even better.
Right. Okay, what was that, Henry? As defined what?
In the, in the, as, as, as defined in the, uh, charged the current Personnel Bylaw. You don't have to put the year in.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, the background starts with the town charter approved. So we just get rid of, the town charter directs the Select Board to appoint. How about that?
That's fine with me.
That sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Susan, you're, you're marking these up and.
I am.
Right, thank you. All right, we're on to C, membership.
Oh, I just want to go back one, one, uh, the, the second part of the background that people agree that we should keep in. It says the nineteen eighty-five charge and that's where I, it's, my understanding of the nineteen eighty-five document is that it was presented to the Select Board to establish a Personnel Department. And there are a number of parts to it, including duties, but it's not a char, I, I just, it's hair splitting probably, but the use of the word charge, because I, I went back to Amy a couple of times and in trying to find the charge, as we see for many of the other committees that we have, there's a charge. It's on the, their, you know, committee page and it's a clearly defined document. And this is not exactly that. That's my only point.
So Susan, Susan, in that first document, it reads in nineteen eighty-five, a document was presented to the Select Board by the Town Manager to establish a Personnel Department. And I agree with you, I think that's much more accurate and direct.
Maybe we should even say that unlike other town committees, there is no specific charge document for this Personnel Board.
It's defined by charter. I mean, I, I just don't know. Do we even need to say, just, can't we just say the current role of the Personnel Board and the current Personnel Bylaw and just get away from this?
Yeah.
Well, I, the nineteen eighty-five document is a point of contention among some people.
So why don't we call it the nineteen eighty-five document?
They'll look at, I mean, you know, they'll look at that.
Well, I think, I think the sentence that's there is really good. And I, in nineteen eighty-five, a document was presented. I think that sentence is, is good.
But below.
Are we in B?
Yeah, we're in B, but then further down where the red lines start, that however, the current role of the Personnel Board.
Oh.
Is defined by.
That's what I was looking at.
Charged, so I'm, what about putting document?
Yes.
That's what I was trying to change. So the current role of the Personnel Board and then just get rid of as defined by the nineteen eighty-five charge, just.
Oh, okay. Yes, okay, good.
Okay. All right.
That's.
Anita has her hand up. Um, I just want to clarify, the nineteen eighty-five document is called the Administrative Code and you'll, you'll find a lot of them revised in nineteen eighty-five. And it was when we were doing a, you know, a townwide update of a lot of the earlier documents. And they included, since that was a new department, it incorporated both the staff and the, and the board that went with it. But they were called, they're called administrative codes. And so it's, I think technically you're right. It's, it, it wasn't a charge per se, but that was, and I, you know, I, there may have been an earlier charge, but it's long, long gone.
Right.
Because the Personnel Board obviously did exist since fifty-six.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, are we ready to go to part C? Everybody all set would be then, okay, membership.
I wasn't sure, sure about, I agree with Henry's edits. Except for the, he's inserted one former town employee and changed three members from the public to two. Wanted to know what people thought about that.
Before we get there, I think we need to change twenty twenty-two town meeting to twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
You know, or earlier by, you know, something if you want, you know, I think we could always, I mean, they could just not meet.
Yeah.
Okay. But I would agree with you that I, I, that was a change that I highlighted. I don't really see the need to have that called out as a former town employee when there already, the other members are supposed to be experiencing human resources or town government. Clearly, our own town government could be some of the experience that that person would have. So I, I just don't know that we need to call out a former town employee as a category. But I don't feel that strongly about it. If others do.
No, because your point is they could step forward is in, in that.
They still have a former town.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah.
Are we going to keep it as is with three, three community members? Or two with a former town employee? And I, I heard what Matt said and agree with that. Just want to hear what other folks think.
I agree. Linda, I think Linda agreed and I also agree. I think we do have, in fact, at least two former town employees who have applied already anyway. So I think we can keep three members from the public at large.
Okay. So most, most of the differences are in this next section, duties and, I call it duties and responsibility, and Henry inserted powers into that section. His numbers one through three, I have not included because I, my thinking about them was that they were very specific directives. Gather information, that they're kind, in a sense, preordaining what the work of the committee is supposed to be. And I don't necessarily see, see it that way. I, my, the original version has, starts with number four on, on this document. Ensure that, oh, no, H, what's three H? To make recommendations to the Select Board, updates on the Personnel Bylaw, blah, 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 blah. And that with Henry's few edits in there sounds fine to me. And then what's in the original document start, continues with ensure that the town system for personnel administration is with those, those bullets, efficient, consistent, with strong management. Responsive, I agree with the wording, I just, my, my, I, as I said, I don't, I don't think that that first part is part of this particular piece of business or the word powers, but.
Okay, and I, I like the insertion of the word town in number four where it says, ensure that we have a town system. I think we need that word in there.
Okay.
The reason I.
Oh, go ahead, Henry.
The reason I was more specific about the, the details of the work was first of all, what we're working from is a, the history of this is that there was an Article Seven was put on the last town meeting and there was a, there was a, there was a, an offer to make an amendment to that Article Seven, which it was felt would not be productive to bring up at the town meeting and have this debate over the personnel structure in, in front of the town meeting. And we agreed that we would, instead of moving Article Seven, we would, we would consider the agenda that was advocated by the proponents of the amendment to Article Seven. And these are items that come from the documents that were produced by the sponsors of the amendment. And it was felt that it was important to describe some of the powers and authorities of this group in order to obtain information and to talk to people and to investigate so that there would no, be, be no issues about whether they were exceeding their authority in dealing with town employees and the, and the, and, and the way the Personnel, the Personnel function was organized. So the idea was to leave no doubt that these were things, not that they had to do, but things that they could do if they were necessary for their function. That's why, that's why I put them there.
Okay. Matt, Linda?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, this is called a study task force and the idea that a study task force would have powers, it's, it doesn't have a regulatory function. So I really think it's, it's, it's not typical for us to put this in charges of even committees that have what might be called powers. This is not, this is a task force. They have duties and responsibilities. I, I don't see powers being relevant. As far as the contents of those action items, I, you know, the, the specific types of information to be gathered and researched, I think that while we had a similar situation with the broadband task force, that there, there was an actual, you know, article that was passed. And so really, to some extent, though, the content wasn't always stuff that we would normally put in a charge, we were, our hands were tied because the town had voted it. Here, we don't have that. And so while it's a nice set of suggestions, and I, I think they are all reasonable things that the, the task force ought to look at, that I don't want to constrain the task force to that specific set of items or to feel that if they don't choose to go after one of them, that they've somehow not completed their charge. So I, I really would like to simplify back to close to what Susan said. I would say if we do keep this stuff, I would get rid of number two. Because I mean, in, in the sense of if you give number three and you outline all the things they're supposed to do, you don't have to have a separate thing saying, don't, you, you can't do these other things. That's what focus solely seems to me to be. And I, I don't, it's weird to write it in that kind of inverted way of what you can't look at or, or only look at this. If we typically say that, you know, committees need to, or task force need to elect a chair and clerk in our charges, then so be it. But I, I think that they can conduct their business and they certainly will do a chair and clerk. So I'm fine with the way it originally was structured, but with those additions of towns, it sounds great at the bottom.
I address the election of a town and clerk under other considerations. So that piece is in there, it's just in a different place.
Okay.
So, yeah, okay. If I, just if I understand, you're suggesting we eliminate one through three? If I.
Three G, one through three G. Three H stays.
I see, okay.
And it becomes just, you don't need numbers at that point. You just, the paragraph is to make recommendations.
Yeah.
Ensure. And then you could have the A, B, C, D, E, that's fine.
I kind of agree. I think that if you're spelling out A through G, the task force might discover H, I, J, K. the task force might discover H, I, J, K, and then they can't do it because it's not spelled out. And I think they might discover, we don't know yet what we don't know. So I would rather keep it general.
And they might not go look at E or whatever.
Right. Okay, any other comments on section D? Oh, I have a comment on section E. This is the next one.
So, so are we going to talk about number four, or has that been eliminated?
No, we text, but you don't have to have the number before of it.
Right.
Okay, so I've added one at the bottom of that list. I just added an F under four to provide non-unionized employees with a fair and just grievance process.
So that's from three D. You move that down, basically.
Basically correct. Yep.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, now. Okay, so we're ready to go to section E.
I'm sorry, Terry, just one question for Linda. You said fair, just, and what was the third?
Provide non-unionized employees with a fair and just grievance process.
Oh, fair and just, okay.
Got it. Yeah.
So in section E, I think what we're trying to do here is not reflected in the wording. I think what we're trying to do here in E is say that we want this task force to consider, when they're doing their work, we want them to consider the authority and role of these various players, A through G. Not that this task force is going to determine what the role and authority is of all these players, and certainly not in the non-human resources role. So I just think the wording is too broad. I think it should just say, you know, consider the authority and role of A through G. It doesn't have to be exactly that.
In regards to the personnel bylaw and, is that what you mean?
Right, I, in other words.
Board, the personnel bylaw and the personnel board, right?
I, I actually think we could take the language from number two that we took out on the previous section even and put, you know, that they're supposed to focus solely on the personnel board. They're not going to be focusing on the authority of other stakeholders, the authority of the town manager, et cetera, et cetera, except when they consider it in terms of personnel board role. Does that make sense?
I, I understand.
So number two is going to become the first statement under E.
I'm fine with that. Or that's one thing to do it. Number two that said, I can't even find it. Oh.
The focus to, that's where it gets to focus solely on the charge of the personnel board, personnel byline related town personnel policies governing the towns.
Correct.
You say the task force is well focused, so.
Yeah.
And then it will also consider the, in the role of authority and role of
Yeah.
stakeholders such as, and then.
Right. Right, that sounds good.
He stole the stakeholders such as, and then it G should be pulled out of the list because it's not consistent with the others.
Okay.
I mean, you could just cut, you could just say, why just cut everything up to citizens and employees, just just senior managers and then citizens and employees.
Right.
And then it could be still G, yeah.
Okay, I crossed mine out. Tell me that again.
So just, so for G, just cut everything right up to you get to citizens. And then I think it.
Okay.
Right? Now, the question I have is, have we proposed so many changes that we need to see a revised draft before we can approve?
I think so.
Think so.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that.
But I think we can still entertain nominations that are next meeting at the same, so we'll approve this and nominate at the same meeting.
Right, right. I think we can, I think we even have some nominations tonight. We can do that.
Can we do nominations to a task force that doesn't exist? We haven't voted it.
Well, it is, it exists, but we're still finalizing the charge. We just want to make sure that Susan heard everyone correctly. We're not going to pick anyone tonight. We're only nominating.
Okay, I still wonder if that's appropriate to do.
If you're really uncomfortable, you can wait.
We can, we could try it. We could try it and see what happens.
We're not, you know, a nomination is not a vote, so.
Yeah, and at a, at a previous, at a previous board meeting, we agreed that we would would take this committee on, so we've already approved that at a previous board meeting. And as, as Terry points out, we're, we're just continuing to work on the charge. So I think we could do it.
I think if we had a major disagreement about the charge, and we really didn't know who was membership, but I think we basically have an agreement, and we just want to see whether Susan got down what everyone said, and there's no typos, and, you know, so I think we're basically there. And we, and we, I'm comfortable nominating, but if.
And, and we will have, I think, more nominees next meeting, and I think we'll be able to fill the, the complement of the committee at the same time as we, as we adopt the charge. And so I think we'll be in business at our next meeting, which unfortunately, what? Will that be, it won't be the thirteenth, and will it be?
Twenty-seventh. Twenty-seventh.
Our next regular meeting is the twenty-seventh. But, as I said, we may have to have a special meeting next week anyway.
Well, also, even at the focused meeting on another subject, we, I assume we can do some routine business.
As little as possible, but we can do some nominations and appointments, yes. We won't do liaison reports. That, that's too lengthy, I think, but we can do nominations and appointments. So, okay. Any other questions, comments from the board on the Personnel Board Study Task Force?
Let's get it done.
Okay, I'm going to take a few minutes briefly if there's anyone from the audience who wants to make a comment or a question about the charge of the task force. So I see a lot of people here who might have more comments. Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, everybody who participated. Thank you, Susan and Henry. I think we're moving along really well on this. And we are now up to a very easy change that we forgot to do last time on the DEI Commission Charge. Matt, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, so, you know, I had made a number of changes that we approved the last time we met on the DEI Commission Charge. However, I overlooked one of the sets of changes that I agreed to make, and that was on the membership. So what happened was, is we investigated it further. It turns out that the school's district-wide cultural competency committee is actually made up of teachers, for the most part, who may or may not be Concord residents. And really, you know, it's a very different kind of a, a, a committee. And then the, you know, the library committee was just a suggestion that had been made. And really, when we think about it, having the maximum flexibility to appoint at-large members gives us the opportunity to fulfill the, the real mission here, which is to get the maximum amount of diversity. So the suggestion is to simply eliminate the earmarks from the membership and just simply state that members will be Concord citizens who reflect the diversity of the community. Certainly, it doesn't forestall, you know, you know, other people from joining, but it's general.
That's a good idea. That, that, it gives us, it doesn't limit us. It gives us the ability to make those choices in, in appointing people to the committee. And so I think it makes our, our job easier, doesn't it?
I hope so.
Okay, is everyone all right with doing that change? Do we need to take a vote, I think?
Yeah, I think we need to move to amend the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission Charge as included in the meeting materials dated September seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Yep, Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Zacharin.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, great. And we do have, oh, I'd forgotten the number, at least five people, it might be even seven, who have now applied for this committee. And we may have to figure out a way that we're going to choose who's going to be on it. We usually don't have this problem. It's kind of a good problem to have. We have a lot of interest. And we want to get a lot of diversity on the committee, so that's great.
Can we do this with that? Can we circulate the volunteer application cards or documents to the board members so we can, we can actually look at the qualifications of the people who have applied?
Yes, we will be doing that, but I, I think they're, they're still coming in. We just got two more today, so give it, give it another week or two, and then I think we'll, we'll circulate them all. But I'm just letting the board know that our usual system is that we have a lot of vacancies, and when someone who's qualified applies, we're thrilled and we appoint them, and that's great. But I think this time, we're going to have more qualified people than we have slots for, and we're going to have to figure out a process.
And that's a, it's a wonderful problem to have.
Exactly.
Yep, and we'll be recruiting at the ag day, yeah.
We'll be recruiting for many committees at the ag day, yes. I want to thank Henry, because he's picked it up some cards that is going to be.
Cards and shirts.
Oh, yeah. Look at that. Great. All right, we're moving on now to the Transportation Advisory Committee Charge. Stephen, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. I just wanted, so when we got the determination from the Attorney General's office that the Transportation Advisory Committee is a public body, I felt like it would be prudent to recommend the change of the composition in two ways. One is to have a specific number instead of, instead of a range of numbers, nine to eleven. Just make it nine, so you don't have issues of what really is the quorum. And then make it, and then take off the town staff. So if we happen to have a meeting of all those people, it would be an unintentional violation of the open meeting law. And so, and then I did add, I did suggest adding, we're keeping the town manager or their designated, and the school superintendent or their designated, so they have a seat at the table. A lot of questions that come up are kind of broader issues or questions than having the town and schools represented, even in a ex officio way. I think is beneficial to the process. And then we didn't, we, we made a kind of policy decision to allow subcommittees with membership that is not a part of the main committee, and that this change codifies it. And I say three subcommittees, just to have, they can rotate, you can have a purpose-driven subcommittee that does its job and then ceases to exist, and then appoint another one. I just, being mindful of staff, resources, and time, I didn't want to have the opportunity, I didn't want to have the possibility of sort of a unending sequence of subcommittees being formed, so that's the only reason why I suggested limiting it to three because of, you know, just, just time considerations. And that, that's it. Those are the only changes I would, I would suggest, and and that, and that's why.
Okay, thank you. I think this is going to be a really good improvement to the Transportation Committee. I think that the staff is extremely helpful and, and it's great that they've been attending the meetings. And as you said, they will continue to do so, and you, at a school person, will be ex officio. I think that's great. But I really like the direction this is going to go in, where citizens will be able to state their priorities and argue with each other and debate what we're going to do going forward with some of these very difficult problems that have to be solved, frankly, by citizens, because we have one interest versus another interest, and how are we going to prioritize? So along those lines, in the membership, it was suggested, well, a couple of things. One is that the town manager is still going to be appointing the members, but it was suggested that these appointments be approved by the select board. And I think that's probably a good idea. And then the other suggestion is that we maybe spell out a a slot for specific types of stakeholders, such as pedestrians or people with disabilities. And so I guess I'd like to hear from the board on those two suggestions or any other suggestions that you have about this charge. Linda?
So one of the, given some of the feedback and experience we've had to date in town, one of the sections I looked at specifically was the list of town residents. And so I just, and I, and I thought also the order in which we described the town residents that we're looking for also sends a certain kind of message. So I just wrote town residents with an interest in walkability and the need for cross-town transportation options. So that was one category. Accessibility of multimodal transportation options was a second category. And, you know, we can deal with the wording, but it's the categories I'm after. Then I put business and transit-oriented issues. Then I put recreational and organized bicycling activities. And last, I put specialized knowledge of transportation planning. And the reason I'm suggesting some version of that is that when people read that list, they see themselves in it before they eliminate themselves, if, if you can relate to what I'm saying.
That sounds really good. What, what I'm trying to understand is these requirements for members, are you, you want one specific member for? What I'm trying to understand is, these requirements for members, are you, do you want one specific member for walkability? One for accessibility, one?
No, I just said the town residents would have an interest in this category, this category, this category, this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Other suggestions, comments?
Could I be Matt for a second? I think the word modal is spelled M O D A L, not E L. It's not multi-model, it's multimodal.
And while we're on that point, ex officio is spelled with two Fs.
Okay, some spell check issues there, great. What do people think of Linda's wording? Should we add that in?
I'm fine with it. I think it's better just to have just town residents and then call out those kinds of interests rather than earmarking specifically.
Right, right.
Yeah, I agree with Linda's point about people looking at the list and seeing themselves in there before they see themselves as excluded.
Okay. And what about the idea of town manager appointing the members with select board approval? Right now, it says town.
I thought that was routine, and I actually think that it's nice because it creates more visibility to the appointments, because then they go through our agenda process. You can see the names. It's very easy to see when that's taking place and who's going on.
Okay. All right, so if.
Can I say, I'm just wondering about the town manager. I'm trying to reconcile these things. The town manager appointing the committee and then being on the committee too. Is that in a?
Not a voting member.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's to be there as a resource, Susan, but also, to be honest with you, it's to make sure that, I mean, we still plan on having town staff, many of whom are listed there, attend meetings. We want to make sure that, you know, the work that they do, you know, is presented, but also it doesn't turn into, you know, we want to stop sign here or something like that. And that can, you'd be surprised how something like that could happen. And so I think it's, you know, I, that's, and that's the reason, is to really bring the town organizational, not organizational, but the town operational considerations into this as well, which are significant in the overall, in the overall realm of transportation in the community.
But I assume you'll bring those in as resources and information for the committee members, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the original concept of this was to marry the technical with the kind of broader community interests.
Yeah.
And so I feel like saying interest in multimodality or interest in walkability versus experience in that is, is, you know, you lose a little bit of that. But I also think that the way you have that list refined, Linda, is a good reflection of the community's priorities. It's more, we really wanted to have, because people say like, there's a traffic management group that meets, and they kind of look at the data and do their expert thing. And then there are people who have kind of broader policy goals about, you know, more bike lanes or whatever the thing is. If you remember, the original concept was the two of them often never connect because of whatever reason. And that's why we set this up the way we did. And it was really working quite well, to be honest with you. And so this is kind of a new paradigm for, you know, approaching transportation issues that I think can still be effective. It's just, it is a paradigm shift.
Right, so I like the idea that staff will still be attending because there are many ideas that citizens want. And some of them might be realistic and others might cost zillions of dollars and not be doable. And so we need that dose of reality to see what can be done and what can't be done and how long it's going to take and how much it's going to cost and everything else. So looking forward to this new paradigm. I think it'll work. And again, we're going to be recruiting. So if you're interested in transportation, please take a look and apply to be on this new version of the Transportation Advisory Committee. Are we ready as a board to vote this? I see we have.
I have a point of order, Terry.
Okay.
I mean, it's about a point of law rather. If the town manager or the school superintendent's deputies are not going to be voting members, then you're not, then it won't be a nine-member committee. It will be a seven-member committee unless you specify non-members, nine members of the public. There is, you'll have the same problem. I'm not, I'm not objecting if the town manager or the school superintendent have a vote.
Okay, I hear you. So it's, it sounds like it's a seven-member committee, and then we have two ex officio members. So is the board ready to vote tonight? Do we, or do you want to see?
I think we should look carefully at that wording, right? So I think that it may be composed comprised of seven voting members and two ex officio members. I think that that would be clear.
All right, so let's look at this one more time next time. We'll incorporate, Stephen, can you and Jeremy incorporate Linda's wording in the?
I'll forward it to Jeremy.
Right, so I think we have changes. We have Linda's word, we have the seven-member committee, and we have the town manager approval of the select board. Were there any other changes? Trying to think. I think that incorporates most of them.
We may be able to vote it.
That's what I'm thinking. It's up to the board, if you're ready to.
I think it's clear enough.
I think we should go ahead and vote with the.
Sorry, Susan, say that again.
I think we're clear on the edits and we can go ahead and vote it. That's the wording about the membership that Tanya brought up, right? And the other?
Yes. Okay.
There is, there is one more issue. They are meeting tomorrow. Who is going to meet tomorrow?
Well, I think we don't have seven citizens appointed yet. And Stephen has sent out the agenda to the, I think the old paradigm will be meeting tomorrow, as I understand it.
But if you change the charge.
Well, we could have it be effective, you know, October 1st or something, if you want.
I mean, I could, I could cancel the meeting. Or we could, we could cancel the meeting and then wait. The only problem is, as you know, Tanya, we had some business that we were, that was pressing, and we didn't want to let that go for this, so.
I'm not object, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not objecting to your meeting or anything. I'm just raising a technical issue. If, you know, I do plead with you to put a natural resources person there, because that was the initial, in the initial proposed charge, until the town manager thought he could take this over as his own committee, and therefore he would be in control of managing that aspect of it. Now that it's, that's not the case, that wasn't the initial charge. And also, approval of members by the select board was also just announced by Mike Lawson. It's not like something I'm kind of insisting on, okay?
Right, okay. So my suggestion is that I've asked the Transportation Advisory Committee to do some work in advance of our October focused meeting. Because right now, if we were to hold that meeting, it would be very unfocused. I'm very eager to get some recommendations from the Transportation Committee, or at least some options, so we have some structure that night. And if this committee cannot meet, and, you know, for the next six weeks or until we fill it up with citizens, then we're going to pretty much have to put off that whole October focused meeting. So I would prefer that they do continue to meet. And we vote this charge and it becomes effective, you know, some date when we think we can fill it with citizens, like November 1st, maybe it would have to be, or whatever. That's my suggestion. What do others think?
I just think that in that case, we don't need to vote it tonight.
Okay.
I mean, although that does raise the question of whether we, you know, solicit nomination for a committee that doesn't have citizen members opening. So, you know.
Well, it would be nice to get going.
What is the harm in voting to approve the charge? That's a separate question as to whether the committee meets tomorrow or even who's on it. It's when the, right, when the, when the charge takes, takes effect, we can say it'll take effect in 48 hours. And then they can meet tomorrow and do what they do, and then we can go on and appoint people to it.
They wouldn't be able to meet again until then.
Right, so why don't we have it take effect, let's say, November 1st? And that'll give the current committee time to get its work done. We can have our focus meeting on October 18th. And that might be a good time to switch paradigms right after that. And the new committee will then have some direction coming out of the focused meeting as to what citizens and stakeholders want. And that also gives us two months to take volunteer cards and do appointments. Stephen?
I guess, based from what I'm hearing though, Terry, and I, I mean, we've spent a lot of time talking about transportation issues and things like that. But I think, given especially the revisions that were proposed to the types of citizen experience or interest that you want, I mean, a lot of the things that will be recommended, you know, kind of stem from those areas. And I, I didn't, I didn't think this 10 minutes ago, but I think so now, that we may just want to look at a different date for that focused meeting. I mean, there's nothing, transportation is a long, slow-moving public policy arena. And so I don't think, I don't, I don't think there's anything right now that is on our, you know, agenda or our docket that would, that is crucially time-sensitive. And so maybe the focused meeting, whenever it takes place, would benefit from a new, you know, citizen-based committee kind of going through issues and presenting their views.
One other, one other thing I might add is the reason that we're changing the composition of the committee was that there was a concern that the current composition of the committee would lead to a potential violations of the open meeting law, because those people working for the town would be communicating with each other off, you know, off the record. And so if that was the reason for changing the composition of the committee, it really doesn't make any sense to have that committee keep on meeting if that's a, that's a potential violation issue.
Okay, so these are, Diane, I see your hand, but hold on a minute. These are really excellent points, and I guess I'm trying to weigh that against. What Stephen said is correct. Transportation is a slow-moving issue. And I think that's part of the problem, that Concord has been very slow-moving about transportation. We are way behind the other towns. And I wanted to try to speed it up a little bit and get something going there. Maybe that's just not realistic right now. So I'm going to go along with the majority of the board. And it sounds like we have two options. One, to try and keep on the schedule we have and make this new charge effective, say, November 1st. Or two, the Transportation Committee doesn't meet anymore until we fill it up with seven citizens. And after that, we give them several months, and then in the spring or whatever, we have a focused meeting on transportation. So those, maybe there's a third option. Those are the two main options I can think of right now. Which way does the board want to go with it?
I'm fine with, let's pass the charge tonight. Effectively, it dissolves the committee. We could still ask for staff input to, to the discussions. But I think it's well that doing it in the spring would be fine. I don't see a compelling reason to do it in October.
Okay. Linda or Susan or Henry, do you agree with Matt?
I think I agree that we should put the meeting off until we, until we get the appropriate membership on the committee.
I was just puzzled by something that Stephen said about some more urgent business that was on the agenda for tomorrow, or I wasn't sure.
Wasn't that the prep for this Storkus meeting?
Well, it was the prep for the meeting. It was to let the Transportation Advisory Committee know that we were revising the charge. And there was an update on Junction Park, but we can certainly give a staff-level update to, if someone's interested in that, or I can present at the next meeting a town manager's report or something.
Okay.
Diane has her hand.
Yeah, Diane's been waiting. Diane, have a brief comment about this?
Yes, very brief. Thank you very much, Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. I'm so grateful for Stephen's comments and for the notion that we will wait and have the focused meeting later, Terry. It's, you're absolutely right. It was a great idea, but waiting for that, I think, is even a better idea right now. The one thing I was going to say is that the league can hold a first Friday on transportation, invite lots of people to participate, and try to get some ideas out there that are broader even than the citizens you appoint, and may in fact bring more citizens into that application process. So in formulating that, I know the league would be happy to try to do that soon.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And I also hope that somebody with natural resources, specific skills, are part of this, because the climate is a huge issue and having to do with transportation. Thank you.
Great, all right. Tanya, very briefly, and then we're going to move on.
Very quickly, I want to thank Stephen for truly running the committee very well, the Transportation Committee. So my goal was not that the meeting should be canceled or anything like that. But I think you're wise in, in, you know, true and to the point with the changes. Thank you. The only thing is there is a minute's correction to be made, Stephen. But otherwise, it was, it was going well. It's just, it was just legal stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Okay, great. All right, so it sounds like we have a consensus to, we will not have a focused meeting about transportation. We will have a different topic in October. I have an idea about that, but we'll talk about that another time. So do we want to approve this charge now? And then we can get started recruiting people. Matt, you're on mute.
I could always just move to amend the Transportation Advisory Commission charge that's amended during our discussion this evening.
That's, that's a little bit late. Linda?
So I've heard from a couple of people now, from the public, and we also received correspondence related to this, adding to the list of interests the environmental impact as another interest area. Are we, are we open to adding that to this list?
I am.
How about others?
Does it change the number of members on the committee or?
No, this is.
Just one of the general.
Just one of the interest areas that, to consider if they want to be on the committee or not?
Yes.
You're okay with that? Okay? Okay.
Okay, how about this? Matt has made a motion. I think, Linda, can you read your list one more time?
I'll try.
And then I think we pretty much have an understanding, and we're going to be ready to vote the charge. Is there anybody who's not ready to vote the charge now? All right, Linda, go ahead, read your list.
Okay. Again, this is under membership and town residents with an interest in. Again, this is under membership and town residents with an interest in colon. Walkability and need for, um, cross-town transportation. Um, environmental impact, transportation environmental impact, comma, is another category. Accessibility of multi-modal transportation options, comma. Business and transit-oriented issues, comma. Recreational and organized bicycling activities, comma. Or specialized knowledge of transportation planning.
Okay. Um.
The only change I added was in paragraph two. Um, the advisory committee will be appointed by the town manager with select board approval. I added the words with select board approval.
Well, and then we had the comprised of seven voting members and two.
Correct, yeah. That's right.
Correct.
Good. So those are our three changes. So Matt, you have a motion.
To amend the Transportation Advisory Commission charge, or to, as specified in our discussion this evening and summarized just a minute ago.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson, myself, aye.
Okay, good. Thank you. Good discussion. All right. Um, our next item here is going to be a brief, oh, Susan?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, but I think I've reached my expiration um, for my participation. I'll, since we've done all the voting, I'll catch up at the end of the tape when it goes on M and M.
Well, we'll be voting some appointments, but that's okay. I think we have a board.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Good night.
Take care, Susan. Take care.
Okay, um, we're going to have a preliminary, um, presentation, right, briefly, and preliminary or discussion about ARPA, which is the American, the something, something.
American Rescue Plan.
Thank you, yes. And, um, I asked Stephen, um, to give us a short intro to ARPA. And then as a board, I think it's appropriate for us to give input to the town manager on where we think the priorities are, because we're taking in five-point-six million dollars, so the board should, as a policy board, weigh in. Uh, as I said, we'll be discussing this other times. This is just our first discussion. So I know that Carrie LaFleur is here, and let's put together some, uh, slides, and, um, go ahead, Stephen or.
All right. So I will turn it over to Carrie in a minute, but I just, to, the American Recovery, um, Plan Act was basically a stimulus bill that was approved by the federal government. Uh, it was done some months ago. Uh, we've talked about it quite a bit in terms of reporting on it and monitoring what was happening with guidance. We've now gotten some guidance um, from the federal government. We have received some funds, as Carrie will, um, detail. But we really want to have a preliminary discussion, share of some brief thoughts of ours, uh, and, and get some board feedback, so we know, um, you know, where we, where, where we should be, um, directing our efforts, so. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Carrie for a presentation.
Right, thank you, Stephen. Uh, good evening. I'm Carrie LaFleur. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the town. Um, should I be sharing my screen for the presentation, or, okay? I won't do that.
Actually, um, you can, or Jeremy can, if you, if you want, if you'd rather do it that way.
Um, if Jeremy can, that would be great.
Sure, let me just pull up a question.
While he's doing that, I'm just going to, um, remind the board that I sent out a really interesting article from the Beacon this week. How to spend ARPA funds with an equity lens. So this, I, um, I propose for the board right now, since we're working on DEI and ARPA, this article combines both.
Thank you, Jared. Go to the next slide, please. So the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law in the spring, and it provides one-point-one trillion dollars of aid, of economic stimulus, uh, on, across a broad category of, um, initiatives. And the intention is to build upon the initiatives that were funded through the CARES Act. But then some additional, um, initiatives and, and efforts are, are coming out, as Terry mentioned, the, the equity, the equity issue and the equitable recovery, which is something that over the last couple of presentations that I've sat through is really coming to the forefront, and it wasn't something that was initially talked about a lot in the spring when, when we first started talking about ARPA. So this plan has funding for many of the initiatives under the CARES Act, extension of unemployment benefits, um, direct payments to individuals, there's some expansion of, of tax credits. There's some student loan forgiveness. There are additional grants to small businesses. There's money available for education, particularly ventilation projects and initiatives that reduce class size. There's rental assistance. There's funding for, um, energy upgrades and individual residences. And then, um, the more, which again, is, is really focusing on racial equality and an equitable recovery. And for particular grant programs that are competitive, based on competitive application, they're going so far as to say that, that applications from certain groups will be prioritized. So that's something that's new over the last couple of months. Next slide, please. So there are, um, really three main categories of funding for municipalities, specifically geared toward municipalities. There's the one that we've heard a lot about, Corona virus local fiscal recovery fund. There was three-point-four billion dollars allocated to the Commonwealth for municipalities, for the benefit of municipalities and counties. And as in Massachusetts, a lot of our counties don't exist. The cities and towns within those counties are actually getting a share of the county allocation that was made at the federal level. And we've talked about this before. The money is either coming directly to a city or town if it is an entitlement community. And they're following the CDBG, uh, program guidelines. So entitlement communities are communities with populations of fifty thousand or higher. And then for communities that are non-entitlement, because their population is less than fifty thousand, the money is coming indirectly through the Commonwealth. The spending timetable for these funds, and I need you to make a correction on the, the, the presentation that you have. The money must be obligated or committed by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, but must then be fully extended by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. So the slide says extended by twenty-twenty-four, that, that should be amended to say committed. The second category of funding that is available to municipalities is called the Capital Projects Fund. There was, there's ten million, uh, ten billion dollars across the country that was allocated to this fund, and each state will receive a minimum of a hundred million dollars. Massachusetts is actually getting more. There's a slide a little further in the presentation that will get into this a little further, but this will be doled out on a competitive application process made to the state. And then the third main category of funding for municipalities is through Economic Development and Administration Grant Program. And across the country, three billion dollars has been allocated here. And it is administered through the USEDA. It's a competitive application process. And I think there's a couple of categories of funding that are of particular interest to the town of Concord. Next slide, please. So back to the coronavirus Capital Projects Fund. Massachusetts is, has been allocated a hundred and seventy-five million dollars. And then again, this will be, um, awarded based on competitive application. And the intent here is to, um, to fund projects that enable, actually broadband projects, and that enable remote work, uh, remote education and health monitoring. And what's interesting here is in the spring, when, when we first started receiving information about this particular um, pot of money, there was a lot of talk about water and sewer infrastructure, and that really has now transitioned over time to broadband being the emphasis. So obviously, this is something that we want to watch in Concord because we certainly would be interested in receiving some additional money for broadband infrastructure. Next slide, please. So here's a little bit of a deeper dive into what the USEDA has available for grant programs. Um, their funding initiatives are jobs for today, communities built for all, and regions for the future. And I've highlighted in green the, the, the programs under these funding initiatives that, that I think may be of interest to the town of Concord, that we'll want to watch and, and follow to see if we might have a, a competitive application here. So those are travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation. There's seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars that's available. Now, this is for the country as a whole. So, um, we would be applying nationally, so obviously, these are going to be much more competitive. Uh, but they're, here, they're looking to provide some funding to communities that were impacted, um, that their travel and tourism economy was impacted by COVID. And obviously, that's happened here. You know, one of the, the major revenue losses that we've had are in our local excise taxes, the hotel motel tax, and the meals tax, so that, and that is a result of, of the re, reduced, um, travel and tourism economy. And then there's a good jobs challenge. There's five-hundred million available there. This is one that, that may be, um, you know, we might be a longer shot for, but it's something that we would, we'd like to, to watch and see if there's an opportunity. And then finally, the statewide planning, research, and networks. There's ninety million dollars available across the country, and this is to invest in economic plans, um, and you know, to, to work on local economic plans. So that's something that, that we want to watch as well. Next slide, please. And so then, and then we come to the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. These are the funds that are allocated for the town of Concord specifically. We have received, or we have been allocated five, five million, six-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars uh, through, through this program. One-point-nine-eight of that is, uh, what we received for the town of Concord based on our population, and three-point-six million of that is our share of our non-existent, uh, Middlesex County. So again, together, five-point-six-five million dollars. We have received fifty percent of that to date, so we have two-point-eight million dollars in our local accounts, and we have not spent any of that. Nor have we committed any of that. The eligible uses for these funds are in four categories. Public health, to, to mitigate the effects of COVID-nineteen. Economic impacts of the public health emergency. Um, to mitigate harm to workers, households, small businesses, and the public sector. Lost revenue. So to the extent that we can demonstrate that we've lost revenue as a result of the pandemic, and there is a formula that we have to follow, um, in forms we would need to fill out to justify or to, um, you know, to, to determine lost revenue, but that, that is something that is available to us. Uh, one of the eligible uses is premium pay for essential workers. And then finally, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, um, investment is allowed under this particular fund. Ineligible uses, um, there probably will be many more identified over time, but the ones that have identified, have been identified to date are, you can't use the money to shore up your pension reserve fund, uh, or your pension fund, and you can't use it to shore up a reserve fund. So you can't, we couldn't use it to establish a new stabilization fund or, or to deposit it into an existing stabilization fund. So. Next slide, please. So then we put together a slide on some suggested uses of, of these funds, and we've identified three different categories. The first would be to address current revenue issues. The second would be to, um, to make some improvements going forward. And then the third would be a contingency. So in terms of addressing the current revenue issues, or we've, we've coined it here, eliminating the blip. And this really came out of a discussion that we had with the Finance Committee as we were putting together the fiscal twenty-two budget. The Finance Committee, um, is on, on record, um, saying that they were not interested in seeing a town budget that reduced services in fiscal twenty-two. Acknowledging that the pandemic, um, is temporary, even though it's going on longer than, than we had hoped, but that at some point, it will come to an end. We will get back to normal. And there really wasn't an interest in service reductions. And so they asked us that, to the greatest extent possible, uh, could you put together a budget that restores service levels in fiscal twenty-two? Uh, or, or maintains, I'm sorry, maintains service levels in fiscal twenty-two. And so we were able to do this by implementing, um, different strategies. The first was that we identified some unspent fiscal twenty-one appropriation. We did that about mid-year. Made an estimate of what we thought we could carry forward at the end of the year. That was about eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. So that was the first strategy that we were able to employ to maintain service levels in twenty-two. The second was that there was an agreement that, that the town manager would hold some budgeted, but currently vacant positions, vacant going into fiscal twenty-two. So as a result of, of the pandemic, some of our operations were, were not, um, were impacted. And, and there were vacant positions that remained vacant because there, there certainly wasn't a need to fill vacancies as they occurred when operations were not running at a hundred percent. So in going into fiscal twenty-two, there's an assumption, again, that some vacant positions will remain vacant as we move toward a full recovery, even if they're not the same positions that were vacant in fiscal twenty-one. And the third was that the fiscal twenty-two budget provides a lower sal, a salary adjustment that is lower than what has been historically provided uh, by the town of Concord in prior years. So those were the three different strategies that, that we used to essentially eliminate, uh, the funding or to, to mitigate the impact of the funding shortfall. So just as a reminder, in fiscal twenty-two, we assumed a loss of revenue of two-point-one-five million. But when we closed the year, the actual loss was one-point-eight-four million. So it wasn't, it wasn't quite as severe as we had predicted or estimated. And the lost revenue is in the category of local receipts. And again, the excise taxes, hotel motel tax, uh, the meals tax. Some of our licenses and permits or building permits were down somewhat, and our investment income was down as well. In fiscal twenty-two, when we put the budget together, we assumed a loss of two-point, uh, two-point-one-eight million, so right, right about the same. Although the, we're probably going to see it in, in different categories. And hopefully, when we close the year, our actual will be less than what we estimated. So in terms of, of any money that is allocated to this category. So in terms of, of any money that is allocated to this category, we would be looking at, at two different items. First, to restore the lost parking meter revenue. And we talked about this a lot at the, uh, when we were putting the budget together, that there was a significant period of time that our parking meters were not operational. Uh, we were not collecting any revenue, but we still had expenses related to maintaining the meters. And so we had to cover that within the general fund budget. And then the second item for consideration is restoration of either lost or postponed wage growth. And the second category is, uh, moving forward, building on the, the back better theme that is, is throughout the, um, throughout the ARPA legislation. And this would be targeted investments in broadband expansion connections, particularly in the business district, other targeted infrastructure improvements. Um, though we don't have anything specifically identified. And then business assistance programs. The third allocation then would be for contingency, either for unknown or unforeseen needs or because this money is available over fiscal years that we wanted to maintain some flexibility to meet any new or changing priorities. And so that is, um, is what I hope was a short presentation on ARPA. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If, if I can just build on one of the points, um, about the build back better, um, just kind of like targeted research investment. I mean, because the town operates its own broadband company. Um, we have a unique opportunity to really benefit, especially for, for recovery in the business districts. There's, there is a lack of connectivity to, for Concord broadband. And so, and we learned that the hard way during the pandemic. Um, so that's an opportunity. If we're in a business district and we are digging up the street to do conduit work for broadband, there could be an opportunity for sidewalk improvements, you know, water and sewer upgrades, things like that. So there is some linkage between the work we would do on broadband and I think some other infrastructure improvements we'd make. But we, we, we need to do some work to, um, you know, enumerate those. But I just want to give an example of one of the things that we could, you know, one of the, um, uses that we, we could potentially target.
Okay, thank you very much, um, Carrie and Stephen. Um, I, I think I have a much better understanding of ARPA now than I did before. It was very helpful. And, um, I'd like to ask, um, board members, well, uh, you may, well, first, let's see if you have any questions for, um, Carrie or Stephen. Linda.
So, um, Carrie and, and Stephen, thank you very much for that presentation. Helpful. I just have a question about, um, it would be wonderful if we can take advantage of some of this, um, money for the, um, broadband expansion in our business districts. That would be terrific. I'm wondering if this same money is available to, um, provide greater access to broadband for other populations besides our business district.
I think so. I think when you talk about the equity, um, component that Carrie focused on, I do think that, that there's an expectation by the federal government that we will look at, that we will provide those opportunities. You know, I will say, we have a diverse group of business owners in our business districts. And so I think that, um, giving them the opportunity to do this is, i- is an equitable recovery exercise. It's, it's one of the reasons why it was kind of the first thing we thought of when we, when we started hearing about the money. But I do think that, um, you know, offering potentially programs to incentivize connections for people who maybe couldn't otherwise afford to do that is also an option for sure.
I, I just didn't want that to get lost, um, in this initiative as positive as this is. So thank you.
Okay, other questions?
I, I'd just love to express that it seems like diversity and equity goals should be just part of our general auditing process. So I would prefer to find ways to just, uh, take this money in a unrestricted fashion to the extent possible, and then look at our broader budgeting process with this larger pool of money in that context of, you know, of course, we're, we're looking at those D I goals as part of our overall objectives for the town. So if you look here, you see that the first three items under lost revenue, they seem to total a little over four million, which would leave about one and a half that would potentially earmarked for some other purpose, such as a broadband expansion. I, I just would say, less is more, simpler is better. Um, you know, unrestricted versus restricted use of funds is better. And then let's look at our overall budget and, and try to find the right use of our funds overall.
So, um, what do you mean, um, the first three out of the four million?
So, so the lost revenue, using FY nineteen as an actual, is, is a base. You have one twenty-eight, four million that's a credit against FY twenty-one and a two point one eight million is a credit against FY twenty-two.
Okay.
And then you have the parking revenue, which I assume, you know, a hundred and something thousand. So I end up with around one point, I mean, four point one five. And then we've got five point six five to work with. So it's four and a half roughly left.
Yeah, but, um, my understanding is that some of that revenue, um, we didn't spend all of the budget either. So some of it was made up already.
I, I thought you'd get the money for the lost revenue as opposed to expense.
We do.
It, it, it's ineligible expense, I think. And, and I, I guess I don't want to, hopefully, um, Carrie will correct me if I'm wrong in this. But we were just showing what we lost in revenue, um, not proposing to, 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 to restore that one for one. I think in addition to showing how much we lost, Carrie went through the reductions we made to, um, get the budget so we didn't have to cut services. And so there is some cost associated with restoring some of the things that we gave up and she went through. But I don't think it's the whole amount. I don't care if you want to touch on that.
Yeah, I, I was going to chime in and I apologize if there was any confusion. We, I, I was really, as Stephen said, just trying to show the magnitude of what we lost. But we did make adjustments in the budget to cover for those. I think, you know, mostly with the exception of the parking meter revenue. That, that really, the lost parking meter revenue is, is the one piece that I think we would like to have strongly considered for replacement. But there were other adjustments that were made within the budget, like keeping positions vacant and using prior year carry forward that to bridge that lost revenue.
So it, I would bet, because I was missing the item that says lost revenue on government services to the extent of revenue reductions. So that didn't say to me cost, that just said revenue. So I was thinking you could apply for any revenue reductions independent of cost savings you might have made. But perhaps it's not.
I, I, I think you could do that, yes.
Well, I think we should try if we can, because that, like I say, that just gives us the money. And now we have all that money and we can now do our general budgeting for the town with that bigger pick of money in the best possible way, as opposed to having it all pieced parted, uh, you know, you know, ahead of time in this, uh, with a little bit of it flowing through your general budgeting process. It's just more moving parts, more restrictions on things. You just want as much as possible to have the, the biggest unrestricted pool to start with for town budgets. It seems like to me.
And, and the reason it's unrestricted is it, the lost revenue that's replaced goes into the general funds. Am I right?
That's what I would hope.
It would be going to the general fund and it could be used for any purpose.
Any purpose at that point.
Funds that we could use funds for, including reducing debt, paying for, um, paying for building schools.
Extending broadband.
Extending broadband, uh, increasing sewer capacity, which is, uh, which is a real issue. That's why, one of the reasons we have, we need a sewer improvement fee.
So I, I think.
So, so just a second, Stephen. So this is, um, so I put this agenda item on for two reasons. One, so we could learn more about ARPA. And Carrie's done a really good job with that. But second, to start this discussion about, uh, because I think it's important for the town manager and his team to know what the select board priorities are. And maybe we don't know yet what our priorities are. Maybe they are broadband, maybe they are also debt reduction for the middle school or, or just, we don't have a priority, put it all in general fund. This whole discussion, uh, we're not going to finish it tonight, but I wanted to start it. So, um, uh, go ahead, Stephen, I, I, um, direct you.
I mean, uh, not to get technical, but it was the, like sewer improvement fee stuff and the broadband stuff, those are enterprise funds. So if we put all of it back in the general fund, it would be, we, we'd have to find a way to move it back over to the enterprise funds. Um, I think that the law itself, Matt, allows for pretty broad flexibility within those categories. And so I, there are times where there are significant strings attached to, especially federal money, that make it almost more difficult to have it than to not. Um, I think ARPA was structured specifically with the goal of flexibility, um, in ease, you know, in customization, right, for every community to figure out their own needs. And like I said, I think, you know, the reason we mentioned the broadband as a kind of top of the minds infrastructure thing is because we are not, not many communities provide their own broadband service to the community. So like I said, we have a unique opportunity to take some of this money and make investments that would otherwise be borne by, um, broadband customers, you know, as capital expenses. And, and so we'd be able to either improve service, increase subscriptions, uh, you know, provide extensions that are paid by the federal government. But the revenue for that, that we would get from that service comes back to, uh, Concord Broadband. So, um, but there are, and I think in terms of, of our D E I B goals, I agree with that, the, the statement that it's a part of everything we're doing. Uh, you know, sustainability is a part of everything we do. Uh, we look at every, everything we do, we look at through a lens of sustainability. And now increasingly, we're looking at through a lens of D E I. So, uh, I do think that whatever we do, um, with, with these funds or whatever investments we make, we need to be able to identify, um, the benefits to those areas.
Okay. Other ideas from the board? Um, Linda, do you have any priorities?
No, I think this is the beginning of a good conversation. And, um, you know, the town manager and, um, the chief financial officer also, you know, have some sense of all the pieces that they're trying to integrate and, and, um, present to us. So, um, I'm sure we're going to hear more about this going forward.
Right. Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
So, I, I do, I, um, just in terms of kind of guidance moving forward, you know, um, is there a top, you know, thing the board wants to look at? Do we want to have another conversation about it? Is there anything that you saw tonight that says, I think it should be, you know, broadband? I think it should be sewer improvement fee, obviously, you know? Just because we're going to need to start planning and we want to start making these investments. So, um, if, if you want to hold off and have them further, then think about it and provide guidance later, that's fine. But I just wanted to check before we move off the topic.
Thank you, thank you. That is the whole purpose. So, um, I think, uh, uh, well, I agree with Linda. It's, this is a very first conversation, but I appreciate Stephen that you're asking this and that we are, um, collaborating, the, the board and the manager together um, about how to come up with these priorities. And I'm kind of making a list here, um, because I think what I've heard tonight is, um, that our goals so far are sustainability, D E I, sewer improvement fee, middle school debt, restore lost wages, um, maximum flexibility, um, which I think, um, to Matt's point, if, if, if it's unrestricted, we can get back some of the, um, I don't know of how I'm going to explain this. We have less free cash this year, um, than we've had in a while because some of that was used to plug the gaps. So if this money comes in, some of it in an unrestricted way, um, we'll be able to get back, I think, some of that free cash flexibility. And I'm sure I'm not explaining it right and Carrie can correct me. But, um, so those are the things that I've heard tonight so far. Sustainability, D E I, sewer improvement fee, middle school debt, restore lost wages, and maximum flexibility.
And is there a, is there a deadline for filing applications for this money?
So, uh, thank you for that question, Henry, because I, I wanted to make sure people understand this allocation is coming to us, uh, almost without application. So we had to register as an entity with, with the Commonwealth. The money is coming to us and we do not need to do any advanced application or provide any justification for use of this fund, of these funds, as long as it's within those four categories. The only, with the only caveat being, if we're going to use money to restore lost revenue, there is a formula that we need to follow to demonstrate that we actually lost the revenue. But.
So this means that we don't have to think about, um, making an application, which is the most likely to receive the most funding, because the amount of funding we get is fixed. The only question is, what do we do with the money when we get it? Is that right?
That, that's correct for the, the local relief piece. And then there are the other two, um, categories that would be competitive grant. But none of those programs are taking application now. So we do have time to look through them, identify, um, any projects that we might have locally and then fill out applications.
And just, just bearing in mind that the intent of the legislation is economic recovery, uh, and, um, equity. And so there's a lot of room to roam within those categories, but it's not totally wide open. But we do have a lot of flexibility, uh, within those kind of broad categories.
So I think we will continue this conversation, um, at future meetings. This is an excellent first start, um, and very good news, very welcome news that we will be receiving this money without a lot of work on, um, staff part. It's great. So, um, we're going to move on now to committee nominations.
Okay, Richard Friese of forty-eight Walden Terrace, Beth Vanduzer of four Granite Post Road, Rosa Halliwell of nineteen Sudbury Road, David Wood of two twenty-six Lexington Road, and Matthew McGrath of one thirty-four Belknap Street to the Civil War Monument Task Force for terms to expire at the completion of the project. Isabel Bailey of one twenty-one Everett Street, Robert Elkin of eighty-two Sun Shadyside Avenue, Janet Rothrock of fifteen eighteen and Nurse Neck Hill Road, and Christina Schur of ninety-seven Hill Highland Street to the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee for terms to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And then Ruth Lauer of a hundred Ty's Road and Claude Chiketti of nine ninety-four Old Road and Nine Acre Corner to the Personnel Board Study Task Force for terms to expire May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And an additional nomination that is not in the packet of Michael McDonald, two hundred and eight Wright Road to the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Now on to appointments.
Before you do that, I just want to point out that, uh, I assume David Wood's address is his work address at Lexington Road. But.
No, that, that is, that is his residence. He lives next to the museum.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Then move to appoint Jim Ricker of sixty-eight Shore Drive to the White Pond Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Gordon Brockway of one twelve Hill Street to be the Light Board Representative on the Fiber Broadband Completion Task Force for a term to expire February first, twenty twenty two. Scott Hopkinson of sixty seven Indian Spring Road to be the Peg Access Advisory Representative to the Fiber Broadband Completion Task Force for a term to expire February first, twenty twenty two. David Hessel of thirty Concord Green to be the Homeowner Association Representative to the Fiber Broadband Completion Task Force for a term to expire February first, twenty twenty two. Mark Howell of six sixty eight Nersnak Hill Road and Gail Hire of fifty four Nancy Street to be the at-large representatives on the Fiber Broadband Completion Task Force for terms to expire February first, twenty twenty two. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, so before we take a vote on this, does anybody have any particular questions or comments about any of these appointments? Okay, seeing none then, we are ready for a roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates is active. Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, thank you. We are on to committee liaison reports. Who would like to go first?
Susan is not here, so I take the honors.
Okay.
So first of all, from the Comprehensive Sustainability Energy Committee, there's going to be a Friendly Homes and Vehicles event on September thirteenth, so it's coming right up. And the committee had a strategy discussion that led to a decision to renew the use of the branding Cooler Concord, both for website and events. And there was also really positive feedback on the sustainability director candidates and the hiring process being used for that position. With the Climate Action Advisory Board, there was additional discussion of the envisioned framework for basically identifying sustainability aspects of infrastructure projects. And in spite of the middle school building committee initially suggesting that it wasn't relevant to them, there are follow-up discussions that are being organized because the CAB members do believe that it's relevant. Moving on to the middle school building committee, the building committee approved classroom window configurations, external material selection, the layout of the auditorium, and recommendations for ventilation and charging stations in the parking lot and other kinds of sustainability issues. So it was a very productive meeting. We're definitely moving through the schematic design process quite efficiently. And then there was also a finance subcommittee meeting that I attended where we appointed Jared Stanton, not surprisingly at the fair, because he's responsible for finances of the school. And we reviewed the budget as it's been expended up until now. And then finally, the Tax Fairness Committee. I was only able to attend part of the meeting because it clashed with the, the middle school finance subcommittee. But they are looking for help from us and, and from the town generally to help push the home rule petition that's been pending. And I, I guess the question is, you know, what can we do more? And then they're also noted that there are fewer citizens than expected that have been taking advantage of the exemption, and they'd really like to encourage further use of the exemption. So that's it.
Okay. All right. Linda?
Yeah, I can go next. The Concord Housing Authority presented to the West Concord Advisory Committee and had their, had full approval from the committee for their affordable housing unit planned for the Juro area on Kamau. I want to call everyone's attention to the Wednesday, September eighth, meeting at five P M of the Junction Village Open Space Task Force. The landscape architect has already presented three schematic designs for that space, and the committee will be voting on their preference on the evening of September eighth at five P M. So I'm sure comments from the public would be appreciated at this time. That's it.
Okay, Henry?
I only, my committees have been fairly dormant during the summer. But I want to just remind everybody that the library book sale is on Saturday, Saturday morning. And on behalf of the Agriculture Committee, that the, of course, we have the farmer's market in Concord Center also on Saturday morning. And I think I've already reported on the Board of Health meeting that I attended. And there is not another one for, I think, a couple of weeks. So I think that's all I have now.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And just briefly, I attended two school committee meetings. The schools have a subcommittee on DEI. They've appointed Tracy Morano, Fatima Mesded, and Sarah Wilson from Carlisle for that subcommittee. The school is Comfort Public School. It's also receiving one point four four million dollars, which is seven hundred and one dollars per student in ARPA funds. And that's in addition to the ARPA that we already discussed tonight. Back to school was successful, and that includes the temporary classrooms in Thoreau, while repairs are being made from the fire. A high percentage of school staff are vaccinated. CCHS students are, over eighty percent of them are vaccinated. And in grade seven through eight, over seventy percent are vaccinated.
Great.
Okay. And the Finance Committee has put out their guidelines for this year. And manager will be discussing that with us on the twenty seventh. And finally, I attended the Acting Concord Regional Emergency Communications Center meeting, the REC. And they reviewed the RFP for project manager, which is gone out now and due back soon. Also, they've reviewed and approved the executive director job description. And the Select Board will need to make a change in the governance agreement for the REC. Probably around November, we will discuss this. It has to do with the open meeting law, recommendations from Town Council. So we'll be talking about that in a month or two. And that's it for my liaison report. We now on to miscellaneous correspondence. We have quite a bit in the packet. I want to acknowledge and thank letters from Joseph Sel, Bruce Bloomberg, Louisa Pauscher, Neil Rasmussen, Brooks Reed, David Allen, Ellen Quackenbush, and Erin Sharra. And at this time, we ask if there are any public comments? Okay, I don't see any. So I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Is there? I admitted I thought maybe you guys want to stay a few more hours. Okay. Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.